May we begin? So, we'll call the hearing to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Shall we begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Want to announce the coverage, Mr. Velos? Proceed with the roll call after that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the Commission. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Poak, San Luis Valley, Samaria, and Orca areas. Rebroadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Moving on to the roll call, Commissioner Kupiak.
Here.
Commissioner Senhour.
Here.
Chair Palice.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Stahl is absent today and we are anticipating Commissioner Miller to join us late.
Thank you. So, the agenda status report.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning. How are you, Mr. Wilson?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you.
And members of the Commission, in regards to the status of our agenda today, we have one item on our standard agenda, which is to have staff from Long Beach Planning Division present state mandated housing regulations for us to adopt and incorporate into our local regulations. Just in case there's anybody watching, I know this is widely billed and a lot of people are at home watching this. This is not housing element related, it is not related to the rezones for that. This is strictly to go review and adopt or provide recommendations to the Board on state mandated housing regulations.
These are mandated, right?
That is correct, Chair.
So, there's no real modification, no matter what anyway, correct?
When we go to the presentation, staff will outline the
Okay.
Commission's discretion, which is very narrow on this aspect.
And this is for implementation?
No.
Is that the title?
It's red, it's on.
There you go.
Red is on?
It's right here, it's red.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I can move to the projection report if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So, this will be our final hearing of 2023 and we will reconvene next year, 2024, on January 17th. As of right now, there are three items projected for that hearing. We have in additions to a residence and then we also have recorded map modifications and then some other exterior alterations of, and then appeal of a project. So, those are on January 17th. And then, moving down to February, as of right now, we have projected to have the Conference of Plan Annual Progress Report before the Montecito Planning Commission on February 21st, and that's all we have projected at this time.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. of public comment at this point?
So, if you would like to speak on any items not on today's agenda, I do see that we have a couple people joining us online. If you'd like to speak at this point, raise your hand and I'll call on you. We do have one speaker. Paige Robinson.
Okay.
Hi. Can you, can you hear me?
Not quite. A little louder, please.
Okay, maybe I'll move closer. Looks like you can't see me either. Oh, well, I'll just go. Hi.
A little louder, please.
My name, I'm sorry, louder?
Yes.
Don't know how to, I'll just move my computer closer, is that better?
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Hi, we live at 97 Eucalyptus Lane, directly across from the proposed new Miramar development. There seems to be a flaw in the county's neighborhood notification system pertaining to the Miramar properties. The computer program used to generate the notices uses the parcels where the Miramar Hotel and its address are located, on the middle of their three lots, and not the overall exterior parameters of the total Miramar property. Additionally, the configuration of the lots, such as those most impacted to the west, do not fall within 300 feet. I respectfully request a review of and correction to the program and/or its inputs that generate future notices before the next Miramar development submittal arrives. Due to this unintentional noticing error, we missed our opportunity to attend hearings and appeal the current Miramar LUB bungalow conversions to shops and cafe. Specifically, we missed our opportunity to vigorously challenge the validity of and request a peer review of the Caruso parking engineer's data and assumptions. This was the same engineer who vastly underestimated parking demands on round one of the Miramar. It's our position that he has done the same again. Upon the examination of the county's notification list, I discovered that not only was my address on Eucalyptus Lane directly across from the new parcel, I mean, the new site parcel, not on, not one of my Eucalyptus residents immediately to the left, or those on Humphrey Road or South Jameson were included, could you please help us modify this? There were addresses from across the freeway, but suddenly absent, other than Miramar to the south, from which two residents spoke in opposition to the bungalow conversions, were any residential addresses from the very proximate streets and immediate neighborhood that lead to the beach and whose inhabitants are the very most interested parties impacted weakly by the Miramar's inability to meet its current parking demands. The Caruso team says they inform neighbors beyond the recommended 300 feet and they have sent notices from all four corners. I don't know from which four corners. I do know neither my neighbors nor I have received any official notices or description of plans directly from the Miramar, nor have at least 10 of my neighbors from Eucalyptus Lane and neighboring streets received any county official notices of hearings pertaining to either of the Caruso Miramar's projects dating back to 2021 or now, 2023. Ms. Brown and Mr. Villalobos have been very accommodating, but the burden should not be on the impacted neighbors to individually contact the county for a case enlarged consequential this. We respectfully request that for all future Miramar projects, the county find a way to notify at minimum all neighbors within 300 feet of the exterior parameters of all three parcels, not just the internal one, and extending to all residents of Eucalyptus Lane and Humphrey Road, if possible, would be appreciated. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I have a question here.
Here.
Who is the authority on what gets mailed out? Who's in charge of that? Is that the planning commissioner or is that the hotel itself? Do you know?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, just as a warning, we're not agendas to discuss this. So, I have, I have taken notes on this, we can follow up. Just as a quick aside, it would be the project planners that are reviewing the project, set the parameters of the noticing and how that's set up. I'll follow up with staff on the comments from the public.
Any comment for anybody else?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for her comment and it's, seems relevant that the mail gets, gets delivered to everybody who's associated with the project, or at least the neighbor. Okay, shall we move on? Planning Commissioner informational report. Commissioners?
Yes, I have a couple. I attended the Montecito Flood Control Master Plan Meeting at Coal Springs School about two and a half weeks ago. It was well-attended and this is in Phase One of their, developing a master plan. They had a slide presentation, which is on Flood Control's website and I urge everyone to visit that, so you can be brought up to date if you have not read any of the reports on it. The next meeting is scheduled in February or March and that will be to further public comments and input before they go to Phase Two. I have been, second, I've been getting some calls from the community regarding one which the interested party who was just on the line had emailed me about noticing. So, that is basically something that I'm sure staff will address. There is a project at the Biltmore Hotel that I received comments on as to what exactly the projects that are underway are doing. There's a lot of grading, et cetera, and at this time, I believe there's been a pause to, I've talked to county staff, been a pause in the work and it's in, in review. But at this time, no work at the hotel, other than the SCD, which was approved quite a while ago. And that is for the roof, entrance, et cetera, like, et cetera. So, to be continued on that. And I think that is it. Thank you.
So, question, was the Biltmore red tag for their, their work? Do you know?
I believe there is a, a red placard in front of the Biltmore Hotel at this time, which I believe is to stop work.
Okay. Thank you.
I have nothing to report.
I just want to report that every, a lot of the citizens of Montecito are aware of the removal of the rings in the three or four creeks that we have and that, I just want to make sure everyone understands that we had no part of the, of the negotiations to remove or otherwise leave the nets there. I find it a bit unfortunate that that negotiation left us out, however, that's the case and they've been in front of us a few times and let us know the timeframe that they had in order to complete their negotiation with the county. However, without offering any opinion on why it went south, it did, it did. But I just want to make sure the public knows that we played no part in this decision and it might have been helpful if we did. that's all I want to say about projects outside and comments from other people that have brought that to my attention. Shall we move on with more?
Mr. Chair, we can move on and Director Powellman will be providing a director's report remotely.
Oh, okay. So, is she, David, is she available? All right. Oh, yes, we do have minutes.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Director Powellman, we're going to do minutes first and then we'll go to director's report.
Sorry, a little bit out of order, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. we had a busy meeting and where's my minutes? Let's see, here we are. No? Does anybody have any comments on, on the publication of the minutes? Make pardon? Yeah, I do have them. I mean, I read them this morning, but they haven't changed, I don't think, since this morning. Some things changed last night, but these didn't. I don't have a particular comment or a modification. Does anyone else?
No.
Bob? No? Donna? So, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the meeting minutes of October 18th, 2023.
Sounds like the three of us approved. So, without further ado, David, I guess we can call this approved.
So, just
We have a vote, you want?
Yeah, just, yeah, just be formal about it.
Since there's only three of us, I thought you wanted to move quickly, but
Yeah, just say all in favor.
Aye.
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 Great, thank you.
All right. Moving on. Find my bearings. Ms. Powellman, are you available now?
I am and for some reason, my camera's not working. Can you guys see me?
No, we're in a new building now, our new facilities and I guess
New technology.
New technology.
Yes, no, for some reason, I think they, they were updating the zoom on my computer this morning and now my camera's not working, so my apologies.
Yeah, well, it worked pretty good last time in our temporary location, but I guess
It did. I think I was, I was like a giant in the last meeting.
Okay, well, do you have something you want to tell us?
I do, I do. First thing I wanted to let you know is that when we do a mailed notice from a property, we measure from the exterior of the property boundary, from the site. That's the requirement under our code, just so, I just wanted to clarify that. Then I wanted to update you on the housing element. So, the Board on the 5th of December adopted the housing element. We have submitted it to the state for review that was done on 8th, December 8th. The state technically has 90 days to review the document, but we're hoping we can get a letter of compliance by the end of the year because we essentially did not make any changes to the document from when they gave us our preliminary compliance determination, allowing us to go through the hearing process. Once we are found to be in compliance and we get our final letter from the state, then all of the consequences associated with being out of compliance, like builder's remedy and inability to get grants, that will terminate, that will cease. So, we are very much looking forward to getting that letter. I just wanted to let you know that today, the programmatic EIR for the housing element and the rezones has been posted and we're starting our 45-day public review period. Actually, traditionally, it's 45 days. We are extending it, I think roughly five or six days to accommodate the holidays. So, people will have a sufficient amount of time to be able to analyze the environmental document and provide any comments on the efficacy of the environmental review. Also wanted to let you know that on the 9th of January, the Board of Supervisors is going to be talking about criteria for rezones under the housing element. And this gives the Board an opportunity to express to the development community and the public what they're looking for from property they're going to be rezoning as part of the housing element, like making sure that there's sufficient recreational facilities on-site, potentially maybe some of those being open to the public, potentially having childcare on the site and trying to make sure that we get some moderate income units on and trying to make sure that we get some moderate income units on a property in these projects, because those are unsubsidized units. And then working with the county and figuring out ways to make sure these units go to our local workers rather than people coming in from out of town. So those are the topics that will be discussed on the 9th. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the housing element. I just have a few other things I'm going to report on after that.
I have a question or two. Does anybody else have questions? You want to go first?
Oh, yeah, I could, yes.
Well, you can go first, I guess.
Okay, Director Palman, thank you. Regarding local workforce, as you mentioned at the, at the closing of your remarks here, that is, the supervisors recommended that that be considered first as far as workplace housing, that it would be local. Is that correct?
Yeah, they want, they want all the housing to go to locals, essentially. They don't want to be providing second homes for people. They want our employees to have a first shot at all these new units.
Okay. And, and so the categories, workforce, employee housing, farmworker housing, does that, is that all under one umbrella, or is there, each category has a different criteria or element, or there's nothing, you can't say just workforce?
Well, this is interesting. The term workforce had been used to define people earning between 120% to 200% of the area median income.
The AMI, okay.
It's kind of a movement afoot in the community to change that because, to upper moderate, because it implies that nobody else is in the workforce if you're in a different income category, right? We've heard complaints from the legal women voters about that. But, so we have different categories, right? We have lower income, we have moderate income. Then we can have this upper moderate, which is the 120% to 200% of AMI. And then you're essentially market rate above that. Those are the categories that we actually use in our inclusionary housing ordinance, right? I mean, we call it workforce, but it's really upper moderate. Farmworker housing is, qualifies as lower-income housing typically, but there are certain rules and regulations related to like a farmworker complex or whatnot. So it does have its own sort of established criteria, but it also qualifies as lower-income most often.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Good morning, Ms. Palman. I was curious about the fact that, I know this, there's no SEQA discussion or mandate on any of these projects, but I'm curious on, are we going to have any funding from the state to support the significant modification on infrastructure on some of these big projects? Is that, is there any supplemental income that we're going to get for the county in order to perfect this, or are we on our own?
So, Mr. Chair, first, I'd just like to start out with the SEQA question. So some of the projects that are in the pipeline will undergo some environmental analysis because they're builder's remedy projects. The projects that get rezoned at higher densities, you know, 20 years per acre or above as part of the housing element, will not require separate SEQA, but they are covered under the programmatic EIR. So that's what's being analyzed. So there is SEQA being done, so I just want to make sure we're clear about that. But I think the thrust of your comment really relates to the cost of infrastructure improvements and whether or not the county's going to have to go it alone, or whether the state is going to help fund things that need to be improved to accommodate the level of growth that we will, could see. And that's a good question, and I don't think I have an answer that can guarantee anything. The state is currently in a situation where they have a very difficult budget, so I don't know that we'll be seeing a lot of money flowing down to the jurisdictions. But usually, we are the beneficiaries of grants and funding through the state, particularly when it comes to infrastructure improvements. So I'm, I'm not going to say that they have given, they have set aside a bunch of money for all the jurisdictions to make all the improvements that will be associated with the growth from their housing elements, but I'm sure we will be getting some money as we typically do.
Well, some projects have more significant costs because of their location and as well because of their density. Galita has been hit pretty hard. I've heard a lot from, from people out there about questioning the, the fact that a lot of the infrastructure is already maxed out, and we're talking about, you know, thousands of more cars in the same maxed-out infrastructure. And I don't think we would ever approve any, any projects, some of the projects of this size if it wasn't for the, you know, the state mandate. So it really begs the question, I mean, are we going to allow housing to be developed without the proper modification of our infrastructure? If we don't have funds from the county, don't have funds from the state, but the developer has the green light to build, what are we to do? Is there, has that been thought through, or is that, I know if it was SEQA, we would, but obviously, without that, we were kind of limited.
So, Mr. Chair, I think it's important to remember that through SEQA now, it's vehicle miles traveled. It's not level of service that you measure impacts with. So for, so, so development in eastern Galita Valley is likely, I haven't read the traffic section yet of the EIR, but there will be less impacts because that's where the job centers are, right?
Well, they have to get out of their, out of their house, and then the first intersection some of them hit is already maxed out. And so if you add 1,200 homes.
Right, so that's not considered an environmental impact at this point, right? Anymore, because the state mandated that all environmental review be conducted on vehicle miles traveled, not level of service at intersections.
I'd just like to remind some people that this has always been a factor for the 45 years I've lived here, that that is one of the first considerations. Can we, do we have the water? Do we have the infrastructure prepared? Is the developer going to pay for this, all this modification? Some of these projects, if the developer's paying for it, they would never do the project. And so without public funding for what we have been asked or otherwise told to do as far as modification of our housing element, I, I think we have a real critical problem, and I just want to make sure that I go on record in letting you know that I feel we have some serious issues that do not have resolution at this point. It's out of our jurisdiction, not necessarily Montecito, but the city of Santa Barbara and Galita. For some reason, the South County is hit harder than the North County, but I understand we have maybe more jobs that are down here that people drive a long way to get to. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not ignorant to the fact that, that we, we need housing. I just would hope that we would take in consideration all that's necessary to have the proper and the most consistent understanding of the effect of all this housing addition. Anyway, that's my soap opera for today. You can continue.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, I appreciate your concerns, and the environmental document will analyze some of, some of that. We do have, still have policies that talk about level of service. So we still, we still will be addressing it. It's just not considered an environmental impact, but it definitely is, changes one's experience when they're on the road, if they're waiting long, in long queues. And I understand your comment about the funding. And I think, you know, we, like all other jurisdictions, are sort of caught in a bind and trying to figure out how to meet the state mandate and still maintaining, you know, adequate facilities to serve the units that will be built. So it's not something that the county is ignoring, but we don't, we, you know, we're sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place, I guess I would say.
I understand. It's just that it's, it's very appealing to go for a project that has a lot additional housing, which satisfies the numbers. But if that's in a very critically stressed-out infrastructure area, namely freeway, on-ramps, and et cetera, it just seems like we're just, we're just going to be adding a huge problem to ourselves, and the relief is going to be a long time out. Because as you know now, we're building a freeway that's 30 years late, and some of the same kind of problems are going to exist in the future out in the west part of our lower half of our county. Anyway, you have more to speak to us about?
I did. I wanted to share one, two bits more of information. One is, we launched, it's called Solar App in the county in the beginning of November. And that is software that allows people with rooftop solar applications to process their application by filling out a questionnaire on our website. And essentially, that process gives you approval. You know, it's, it gives you approval for your permit, and then the county essentially does the inspections. So it's a way to fast-track rooftop solar applications. And since we went live with it at the beginning of November, we have 94 applications already in the system. So we're very excited about that. We also received a grant to help with the implementation of that application and help with some infield equipment for our inspectors.
Can I ask, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Regarding solar, is it, you know, ordinances and everything changes on solar? At one point, it was, if it was a new build, solar would be required. Is that sort of the parameter still, or not? On a single-family residence?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Senna, through the chair, are you asking about our building code?
Yes, our sole, well, I think it was, originated at the state, maybe not. I could be incorrect, of course, but yes, the code, the building code, if solar is required on new builds.
A Commissioner Senna, through the chair, I don't believe that's correct.
Okay.
I don't believe that's correct.
Okay.
But I have to look into that.
Okay, thank you. And the other is subsidies for solar have diminished. Is that not correct?
Actually, Commissioner Senna, through the chair, it's my understanding that the federal subsidies are still there for tax credits.
Right.
And they will continue as part of the Infrastructure Act.
Okay, okay.
And I can't remember the date that that terminates, but it extended it for a few more years.
Okay, great, great.
What the, what the change has been, what is, at the Public Utilities Commission, and it's the amount of money that the utility actually pays the homeowner for generating solar power and sending it back to the grid, making it less economically viable for, sort of decent incentivizing solar. And interestingly enough, there's, a lot of the solar companies have been hit pretty hard by that. And so there's been an appeal of that Public Utilities Commission decision, and they're asking them to reconsider it because of the impact it had on installation. So I don't know where that will go, but.
Okay, all right. That's, that's, that's my reference, then. So it was environmental justice sort of approach here with PUC to equalize lower income?
Yes.
The cost, the cost of solar, okay, all right. Thank you.
Pardon me, Mr., Mrs. Palman, or Ms. Palman. You said earlier that in this solar arrangement you have with the state that you may get some assistance to implement this, this rooftop project. Does that mean you'll be able to hire permanent staff?
Mr. Chair, so what it was, was a grant to allow us to help pay for the work to implement the actual application on our system. And then also buy equipment for our inspectors that are in the field inspecting the installations.
I see.
So that's what the grant was for. This application basically streamlines any permit review. It all happens through the application. The county does not review the permit itself. All we do is inspect to make sure that it meets the specifications of the permit.
So it doesn't go by fire department or anybody else, you're saying, then? It doesn't?
That's correct. It's a rooftop solar application.
Okay, because I know.
If you're, if you're proposing ground-mounted solar, it doesn't go through that application.
Right, okay. All right, I just know that your fire department is, with my activity over there, that they're, they have quite a stack of, of permits to get to, and they're quite busy, and I was just wondering if you might be considered hiring somebody else because of this ability to get some, a grant. But that's a sort of a different topic, so I'll let that slide and let you complete your comments.
So I think, I think that actually concludes my, my comments for today.
I, I have, Director Palman, I have a follow-up question. So regarding the housing element update and going forward to the state, the approved county, and the certification by the state, which you're anticipating soon, because basically, the state, you followed the guidelines of, of the state in the update. What happened, what is the status quo of builder's remedy by right, et cetera, during this time?
So Commissioner Senna, through the chair, until the state finds us to be in compliance and, you know, quote-unquote certifies the document, we are still subject to builder's remedy applications. And we remain subject to like SB 35, ministerial applications, and then 2162, AB 2162 applications, which are transitional housing. So there are a lot of state laws that have been passed, and you're about to hear, about to hear an item that brings us into conformance with those laws, a number of them. But, so there are ministerial permits that are still being processed, and that won't change once we're certified.
I'm sorry, will or will not?
Those won't. Those ministerial efforts, like the transitional housing ministerial, that's a new state, and probably basically allows that all the time.
Okay, all right.
But builder's remedy will end once we get our letter from the state.
Okay, all right. But those in the pipeline, so to speak, remain viable?
That's correct.
To go forward as a builder's remedy, okay.
That's correct.
Do you know how many?
There are two, two stages to a builder's remedy application. Typically, one is a pre-app that gets submitted, and they have to do that before we are found to be in compliance. And then they have 180 days to submit a formal application. And if they miss that 180-day date on the calendar, then their application goes away.
Okay, okay. And, thank you. And then a follow-up to the flood control, Montecito Flood Control Master Plan. I forgot to remark about an ombudsman staff position. Could you, is this appropriate? Do you, do you have details on that at all? Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you for asking, Commissioner Senna. So last year, during the budget cycle, the board identified its, some funding, some limited funding for what they call an ombudsman during the rainy season, and, and after, too. And the purpose of this position is to assist property owners who have damage along their properties in, in the areas where they have creeks or where there's been some flooding. But the, the idea is that a lot of property owners that have had damage along the creeks that run through their properties or border their properties have had difficulty navigating the permit process through all of the agencies that they must communicate with and potentially get permits from. So the ombudsman's position is going to help those property owners navigate that process and work with them. And we've designated Petra Leva as that person, and she's been having initial meetings with the different county departments and then the state and federal agencies, so that we're all on the same page if we start to see, you know, serious storms. And, you know, we have a storm now coming in, but if there's a lot of damage associated with that, we're going to be able to help property owners get through that process.
And, and what would, where would they locate this, Petra's ombudsman site? Is it on flood control? Where, where would a property? Is it on flood control? Where, where would a property owner locate that?
That's a very good question. And, um, I'm going to have to circle back with you on that to see where we have it on the website.
Thanks. It would be great, since we do have a significant storm event coming in. Uh, and if it manifests, I suspect that, um, staff position, Petra will be very busy, and it will be very helpful to the community. And I see Secretary Wilson raising his hand. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Director Plowman, if I may, and commissioners.
Yes.
If you go on our website, there's a, on the left-hand side, under quick links, there's a quick link that says winter storm damage permitting information. And when you click, when you select that, it provides information on the, on the ombudsman's role and different information on repairs within creeks and permit requirements. So that would be the starting point for members of the public to want to get in touch with Ms. Petra Leva and get initial information on repairs and damages and permitting required for creeks and waterways.
Okay, so.
And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sennauer, it's also under news and announcements on our website.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Bob.
Commissioner Sennauer may be able to answer, but if not, it's going to go to the other side of the table. I was not able to attend that meeting. I attended the previous meeting that, that County Flood Control had, and I know that they are.
Can you speak into the microphone, because I can't hear anything you're saying?
You know, I think I have to like move a little bit to make it easier. At the last meeting that I attended, we understood that they were in the, Flood Control was in the process of developing their long-term master plan, and that was based on new data that was provided by the Corps, Army Corps, and there is an existing new LiDAR map that was created that they are using. I've made multiple requests for this new data to be shared with our commission, and for some reason, either by federal mandate, or, you know, I mean, we've not been provided with that. And we would very much like to do a comparison analysis to see how the LiDAR map changed from one, from the previous LiDAR map to the one that is now being used to develop the master plan. I don't know if any of that was shared at the meeting, because it was not shared at the prior meeting, and this seems to be kind of cloaked in mystery. And I'm not sure what our rights are as a commission, but if I could use the word, I demand to see that information.
You would.
I would. And for some reason, this just, you know, it's kind of like, where are we? And I think it's tied to other issues, which may be the reason why it's not being shared broadly.
Could we invite Flood Control, perhaps? Um, Chair, you're still chair in January.
Partially, yes. Yes, I would love to invite Walter and company, if he's still there. There's going to be a change in leaderships sometime soon, I guess after Scott leaves, I don't know, I guess Walter will be there in January, so we can ask him to come. But I, I've talked to the supervisor, and I understand that we were supposed to receive it, but there's some limitations on whose eyes gets to see it. And I, I was confused by that, because if we could see it, why can't the general public see it? So, um, maybe we can get some answers in January, or unless, Ms. Plowman, you have an answer that, that would be simple, you can tell us, but why we don't have that information?
Mr. Chair, I think that's a question I'd have to forward to the Pub Works Director.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have that information.
We would really appreciate it. Um, it does lend itself to, like you said, comparisons, would tell us things about various creeks, which ones are more, have modified or changed. And it also speaks a lot to the freeway sound walls, and I, I unfortunately believe that that's had an effect on why we don't get this information. But we'll leave it at that, and maybe we can invite Walter and company in January if we can. Thank you.
But I would have to say that the invitation to Flood Control to come with us means they come with information in hand.
True.
I mean, I don't want to sit here through lip service about why we don't have the information. If the information's not going to be provided to us, then I'd like to know why, and I'd also like to know what our remedies are under the Public Information Act to get that information.
Okay, Donnie, any comment?
So where are we leaving this? We would like to invite.
Yes.
Okay, in January.
It's true.
And to touch base with them on our queries, correct? Enumerate them, correct?
Yeah, whether it's nets, whether it's basins, whatever it might be, that gives us a, a more informed picture on how they look at this new interpretation of the map in respect to everything infrastructure-wise for our area. We don't have it.
I have, um, Director Plowman, a last question about how, and Secretary Wilson, going to the site, quick links. Is there, you know, the search bar, you know, what can we help you with? If you type in ombudsman flood control, would it come up there?
Madam Chair, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sennauer through the chair, I will have to go on their website, but I don't think so, because it lives in planning and development.
It lives in planning and development, okay.
The position lives in planning and development.
Because often, that's, that's the go-to search, right? You have the bar for search, and you type in what you're looking for. That's where it's very helpful if you, if, if it come up there somehow, rather than just living in planning and development. So, not to, not to belabor this, but it is of great import to not only our community, but the whole county, to be able to identify. The ombudsman, is it just for Montecito? No.
No, it's county-wide.
Right, okay. So I'm just saying a heads-up, the, the clarity there in the search bar would really be helpful if, in any way, rather than the quick links and, you know, going through, well, I appreciate that. Often, folks or community members are used to just doing a search bar and have it come up, so I'll, I'll, I'll leave that. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? I mean, Commissioner, you're not a Commissioner, but you're, you're a director. Please.
I am a director, it's true, it's true. I do not have anything further.
Well, thank you for coming this morning. Well, you didn't act, I guess you're in your office, I hope you are. But in any event, thank you for coming. Bye-bye, for speaking.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Um, we have, uh, we have a waived public hearing, the back and alter, alterations.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's for noticing purposes only, no action needed.
Right, right. Um, I'm just curious, is that not in the flood, in the coastal commission? That property? 141 Hickson Road?
It should be.
Yeah. Do they get exempt from that as well, hopefully?
Mr. Chair, this item is a waived public hearing for the county.
I know that.
For the county. So, um, yeah, so this is just in regards to a public hearing on the county level, not waiving any hearings from the coastal commission. And it'd only go there if there was like an appeal, or if it was appealable.
Yeah, it's a very small modification, and it's a very distinguished architect. So, I'm just curious whether we're waiving coastal commission projects as well now.
Mr. Chair, that is not what this item is for.
Okay, all right, well, that was not an answer, but I'll accept it.
And, and noticing has been given out appropriately, correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right, so, moving on to the, the big project comments, or project, I shouldn't say project, but agenda item. And we have, um, some distinguished presenters today. And so, Alex, you start, or how does it go?
Want to read that, I mean?
Oh. I'll start.
You want to read it?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take care of that part.
There's 140 pages I left at home, so.
The following is a hearing on the request of the County Santa Barbara Planning and Development Department. For the Montecito Planning Commission, consider recommending that the County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors adopt ordinance case number 21 ORD 2, and determine that the ordinance is exempt from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to state, to section 15061B3 of the state guidelines with implementation of SEQA, and to adopt ordinance case number 21 ORD 3, and determine that the ordinance is exempt from provisions of SEQA pursuant to sections 15061B3 and 15265 of the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
So I understand this properly. We're asked to recommend to the County Planning and the Board of Supervisors, do they have voting rights over any of this, or is this just a pass-through to the state?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, we can certainly answer that question as part of our presentation.
Sure.
But, uh, essentially, uh, these are ordinance amendments, so the Board of Supervisors is the adopting agency. Uh, your recommendation is to the board for action. For the coastal zone, uh, you are recommending to the planning commission, who then recommends to the Board of Supervisors for adoption.
Okay.
But yes, we do have authority to adopt these code updates. Uh, as Mr. Wilson mentioned at the beginning, uh, the purpose of these ordinance updates is to comply with state law with regard to various housing bills that have been adopted over the last several years. So we have very limited discretion, but nevertheless, our attempt here is to bring our local regulations into alignment with state law. Uh, our staff through the presentation today will highlight a few areas where you, where we do, as a, as a local agency, have some discretion. Uh, so with that said, I wanted to introduce Lila Spring and Brianna Alamea. Uh, this is Lila's first hearing in front of your commission, so hand it off to them.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Good morning.
Good morning, nice to.
Chair, please, thank you. So my name is Lila Spring, and I am here with Brianna Alamea from Long Range Planning, and we are here to present the Housing Bill Implementation Project Ordinance Amendments, which we, oh, they're there. So our presentation today will cover project background, the new and revised ordinance sections and chapters, policy and ordinance consistency, compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, next steps in the planning process, and staff recommendations. So first, I want to provide a little bit of background on why we are proposing these amendments. So in recent years, the state legislature has passed a number of new state housing laws with the goal of increasing the supply of housing, particularly affordable housing and housing for special needs groups, including seniors, individuals experiencing homelessness, and individuals that require ongoing supportive services to remain in permanent housing. The proposed ordinance amendments are required in order to comply with these new state laws. Something to keep in mind as we go through these amendments is that these laws are very prescriptive, with little room for modification to provisions or text. But where the county does have some discretion to make changes, we have highlighted those options throughout this presentation. So these amendments include changes to both the Montecito Land Use and Development Code, which we will refer to as the MLUDC, and to Article 2, the Coastal Zoning Ordinance, or CZO. And these ordinance amendments also change existing sections of our code, as well as adding entirely new sections of the code. So we are going to start with those sections that already exist in our code that we are modifying or proposing to modify through these amendments, beginning with the Density Bonus Program. So the Density Bonus Program implements, implements state density bonus law. And state density bonus law encourages the production of affordable housing by providing for increases in the maximum allowed density of a specific parcel in exchange for some portion of the units being restricted to particular levels of affordability. State density bonus law also includes concessions and waivers to development standards based on the proportion of affordable units, and includes waivers and modifications to development standards that would have the effect of physically precluding development at the allowed density. Recent changes to these laws include an increase in eligibility, increases in the size of the density bonus, an increase in the maximum number of concessions allowed, which went from four to five, as well as modifications to required parking ratios. So this brings us to one of our optional provisions, which is that the state law sets an affordability period of 55 years. So for units developed through the Density Bonus Program, they must be maintained as affordable for 55 years before conversion to market rate. But staff are proposing to extend this period to 90 years. And the reasons we are proposing this increase are to maintain the inventory of affordable housing created through the Density Bonus Program for a longer period of time, and to align with the county's newly adopted 2023 to 2031 housing element goals, policies, and programs.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
If that's acceptable during the presentation. I don't, it, it's just sometimes best as you, you know, as you go through it, rather than make notes at the end. So where is the definition of affordability?
So.
AMI, or what are we using?
Yeah, so it's a percentage of affordability, of AMI, that sets different levels of affordability. So there's, sorry, let me just pull up.
So the area, um, the area median income, the, the area to which we're speaking regarding the Montecito LUDC, is it our area that this references?
It's the county, it's the county AMI.
It's the entirety of the county.
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's my question, thank you.
So, let's see, continuing on, so our next, um, section of amendments are related to transitional and supportive housing, which are existing sections within the MLUDC and CZO. However, as part of this ordinance amendment package, we are proposing to relocate these sections. They are currently located under community care facilities, and we'd like to relocate them into a standalone section, or to standalone sections. Um, the changes to the content of these sections are relevant to state law that allows for the provision of by-right supportive housing. And by-right means that these are allowed ministerially without a discretionary permit, as long as they meet certain requirements. So in the coastal zone, this permit type would be a coastal development permit, and in the inland area, this would be a CZO, or, excuse me, would be a zoning clearance. Wait, did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Getting my words confused. Okay, so the requirements that must be met in order to, for these projects to qualify for ministerial review include that they must occur in zones where multifamily and mixed uses are allowed. And this, under multifamily, has included two-family dwellings, and also non-residential zones that allow mixed uses can have these developed in them. Another requirement is that they must be 100% affordable to low-income households, and that 25% or 12 units, whichever is greater, must be reserved for supportive housing. They're also required to provide supportive services on-site. Yeah?
Are you saying that all the sites are going to have a designation of 100% low-income?
No, it's only that, so for a project that's moving, that wants to qualify for only ministerial review, rather than our regular discretionary pathway, they have, that development itself has to be 100% affordable to low-income households.
So that's not going to happen, basically?
In order, well, in order for them to use this ministerial pathway.
But I'm saying that there's, there's no one that's going to.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, these projects are typically, um, you know, sponsored by, like, a housing authority, or a public agency, or a nonprofit. These aren't for-profit ventures.
So is this the LBNC?
Uh, that's a different category.
Okay, this is supportive housing.
It, it's for, uh, individuals and families who are experiencing homelessness, or, or are in need of certain services.
You know, since we.
It's a class. It, it's a population class.
It's a target population.
Yes, thank you.
You know, since we are interrupting this moment, I'll just throw another interruption from something else. from something else you said earlier, in that it's a standard we're using for the whole county as far as evaluation of property.
Income.
Income. However, we're not being judged that way in the sense that we've split the county in half in this project, and there's the North County, which has a lot less density addition.
Mr. Chair, I just want to stop you right now. This has nothing to do with the housing element and the rezones. So there's nothing about splitting the county in half. This isn't a North County/South Coast issue. This is-
This is here.
This is adding language into our ordinance countywide-
Okay.
To comply with the supportive housing requirements under state law.
I just wanted to note one other thing, the difference between, another difference between supportive housing and the low-barrier navigation centers. Low-barrier navigation centers are kind of a type of shelter, whereas supportive housing is permanent housing. People go to live there. So it's similar target populations, but different approach to what type of housing it is, if that makes sense. Okay, let's see. So these buyright supportive housing that is processed ministerially is only subject to objective development standards, and this includes objective design standards, which we will talk about a little bit later on in this presentation. And the state law also includes specific deadlines for review and approval of these projects.
And I'll stop you here. Can you reference appeal capabilities to any of these, as you go along these categories? Ministerial, no appeal, is that correct?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, in our, I'll use my background to-
Please.
Answer that with permitting. So zoning clearance would be non-appealable. In the coastal zone, with a coastal development permit, you would still be subject to appeal.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, this brings us to another of our optional provisions, which is that the state law allows a maximum of 50 units of supportive housing to be processed ministerially, but gives the county discretion to increase this maximum. And staff are proposing to increase this limit to a maximum of 75 units. And the reasons that we are proposing this are to increase the available housing for special needs groups, and to align with the goals, policies, and programs of the 2023 to 2031 housing element. So we're now going to move on to the additional sections, or new sections to our code, starting with the multiple unit and mixed-use housing objective design standards. So these objective design standards were developed in response to an increase in state legislation that only allows the application of established objective design standards. Objective meaning no personal or subjective judgment is required to implement the standards. So the purpose of these standards is to provide the public and planners with clear, objective criteria to evaluate multiple unit and mixed-use projects that will not be reviewed by a Board of Architectural Review, or BAR. These objective design standards were developed and adopted into the county's Land Use and Development Code, or LUDC, by the Board in January of 2023. And since that time, staff has worked with representatives of the four county BARs to refine the standards in the LUDC and to incorporate them into the MLUDC and into the CZO.
And the standards are the, quote, "objective" standards?
Correct. Objective design-
Which is quite lengthy.
Yes. And it's for, specifically for multi-unit and mixed-use projects.
Correct.
Which become hardly objective.
Okay, okay.
Well, you continue.
So these objective design standards include five sections. The purpose and intent, which describes why these were developed and when it's appropriate to apply them, building design, site design, mixed-use standards, and the utilitarian elements. So the building design section includes specifications related to each of the categories that you see here on the screen. And building design primarily covers the mass and articulation of a building, so the variations in elevation and facade. Site design covers how a building is placed and the building orientation on the site, as well as how the site itself is developed, including landscaping, open space, and parking. The mixed-use standards include ground floor height and transparency, and the street-facing setbacks and entrances. And these are specific to those projects that include both commercial and residential uses. And the final section is the utilitarian elements, and these are essentially the accessory elements of the development, including bicycle parking, trash and recycling, fences, et cetera. And this section consolidates objective standards from other sections of the code related to these utilitarian elements, all in one location. So I'm now going to turn it over to Brianna Alamea to continue our presentation, starting with another additional new section of our code called Qualifying Housing Streamlined Review.
Thank you, Lila. So now I will be talking about the proposed new chapter in the MLUDC, Qualifying Housing Streamlined Review. So the content of this chapter was adopted into the LUDC by the Board in January of this year. Staff is proposing to carry over the adopted LUDC chapter into the MLUDC with revisions to clarify requirements. On January 1st, 2025, the state law requirements will go into effect in the coastal zone. In response, staff will propose relevant amendments to the CZO then. The passage of SB 35 implemented a streamlined application review process for qualifying multiple unit and mixed-use housing projects that contain at least 50% affordable units and are located on urban infill sites. These projects are statutorily exempt from SEQA, require ministerial review, and follow objective design standards. These qualifying projects only require a zoning clearance. The provisions of this law only apply if the state has determined the county has made insufficient progress toward meeting its prorata share of its regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, which is determined annually as part of the annual progress report. Since June 2018, state HCD has made annual determinations that the county has made insufficient progress toward meeting its very low-income RENA, and is therefore subject to the SB 35 ministerial approval process for proposed developments with at least 50% affordability. In September of this year, the state extended the expiration date of this to now expire on January 1st, 2036, unless they extend it further. I'm going to go ahead and transition to the last ordinance we are proposing in the MLUDC and CZO, which is about low-barrier navigation centers. So low-barrier navigation centers, or LBNCs, are service-enriched shelters serving as temporary housing focused on moving people into permanent housing. LBNCs contain case managers who focus on connecting the individuals experiencing homelessness to income, public benefits, health services, shelter, and housing. LBNCs apply in mixed-use zones and non-residential zones, permitting two-family or multiple-family uses. The proposed ordinance establishes streamlined permit procedures and development standards for LBNCs meeting specified criteria. Streamlined LBNCs shall not be subject to Board of Architectural Review, and the director shall consider LBNC applications ministerially. The ordinance establishes application review timelines and is set to expire on January 1st, 2027, unless extended. So as low-barrier navigation centers are the last of the ordinance amendments being proposed, I will now discuss the policy and ordinance consistency with the county's existing codes. So the proposed ordinances implement mandated state laws and are consistent with the county's existing policies and ordinances. They're consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the 2023 to 2031 housing element updates, goals, and policies. They are further consistent with applicable community and area plans and the coastal land use plan. The proposed ordinances allow for development consistent with existing land use designations. Projects in the coastal zone do not lessen the effect of and must be consistent with all applicable policies and provisions of the local coastal program. For environmental review, the proposed MLUDC and CZO amendments are exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3, as there is no possibility of significant effect on the environment.
I have a question. Okay. Red is on. Okay, excuse me. So this category is the common sense exemption. It is not, therefore, you're claiming this, or it is being claimed, because there's no statutory right component to filing for an exemption, or finding for an exemption, or categorical. So, correct. So walk me through the common sense exemption, because I don't think it's been, that exemption has not been before us, I think, in the past, as far as a SEQA exemption. So in that it's, there is, quote, "no possibility ever in the whole world" that this could be environmentally an issue. How do you reconcile that? How does, just by claiming it, okay? So is it just strict, I'm trying to get clarity here. Is it strictly the ordinance? It is not a project under the ordinance that qualifies for a common sense exemption? Okay, so it is strictly the language in the ordinance itself, but it does not follow the projects that may come up? Okay, I just, and then, okay. So if someone could explain to me, please, common sense exemption, okay? How do you work through that? I looked at the SEQA book, all that, thanks to David, who always sends them. However, I just, to be informed a bit better, and we can trail this, okay, and just get through your presentation. I don't want to belabor it, but to me, it was unique. So just kind of put that over here.
Can you answer that, or comment on it?
Commissioners, in our, through the chair. Sure. So, yeah, the common sense exemption, as you articulated, in this, is often used in situations where we're just making ordinance updates, but we're not approving a project, per se. You know, there's no development in front of us that we can evaluate impacts against. So often with a planning effort like this, you'll look through the list and options for exemptions, see where it falls in. Something like the housing element, it's a big effort. You do an EIR on little more surgical ordinance updates like this. The common sense exemption is often used because, again, we're not approving any development as part of this project. We're just making changes to our code. And then any subsequent project that comes before the county would then be subject to SEQA on its own. In the case of these, most of these projects, they are statutorily exempt from SEQA, so they would not be requiring SEQA because they are only subject to ministerial review. So that would be how SEQA would be handled on a project-by-project basis. But again, with these ordinance amendments, we're not approving any development project, and so there is no physical impact associated with these code updates.
Okay. All I would recommend is that instead of just the citation of 50, 15061B3, or Q was in there somewhere, too, I thought. If you, if parenthetically, you could put "common sense exemption," something like that. Anyway, I will not belabor this anymore. Thank you.
Okay, you want to proceed?
Yes, thank you. So in addition to that common sense exemption in the coastal zone, it's also exempt per Section 15265, which exempts local government activities involving the preparation and adoption of local coastal program amendments from environmental review. So we are concluding, and for the next steps in our process, we will be presenting these ordinance amendments to the County Planning Commission on January 10th, 2024, and to the Board of Supervisors for adoption on February 13th, 2024. And to conclude, staff recommends that your commission take the following actions on the screen. So to make the required findings for approval, determine that the proposed ordinances are exempt from the provisions of SEQA, adopt a resolution recommending that the Board adopt Case Number 21, ORD2, and adopt a resolution recommending that the County Planning Commission recommend to the Board to adopt Case Number 21, Ordinance 3. So this concludes our presentation, and we're available to answer any questions.
Well, we have a lot of common sense, so we probably don't have many questions. Go ahead.
Before, red. Before we continue with our comments, Secretary Wilson, could you please define our narrow, you opened up before we had the agenda item read. Could you clarify that now, ahead of time, Alex, rather than at the end of a long discussion and then having someone said, "Well, you know what?"
Commissioners, in our, through the chair. So as we mentioned, these are all state laws. So they are in effect regardless of changes we make to code. So if someone came in with a qualifying project, we'd have to figure out a way to make it work within our existing code, but we couldn't suddenly require an SB 35 or LBNC project to comply with our existing regulations, because we're not in compliance with state law. So we are superseded, in essence, by state law with these. So our effort here is to bring our county codes into alignment with state law, so that it's clear we have established process to meet the state requirements. And so for that reason, we say there's very little discretion, because we can't suddenly say, "Well, we'll just choose not to implement these changes" and sort of ignore the state. It doesn't work that way. So the state law preempts, in these cases, our local regulations. So if we choose to say, "Well, we don't want to make these," the problem won't go away. So again, the goal here is to bring clarity and focus to our current codes so that they comply with state law. We didn't add in any additional standards or requirements that aren't otherwise prescribed by state law, but we did, where possible, look to just customize them so that they blend into our existing regulations. So for example, where state law says it has to be subject to ministerial review, we gave a permit type to what that means. Zoning clearance in the inland area, coastal development permit, so we don't have, no one has to be guessing. So it removes some of the guesswork, but we're not establishing any new regulations here.
So for particular, call out a language, or a descriptor, that you have all the underlines, which are new, is that correct? Right. And we can offer some observations with language clarity, maybe?
Sure, like wordsmithing here and there, absolutely, but wholesale sweeping-
No, I understand. Okay.
-changes are not really an option. Now, with the objective design standards, you know, the state doesn't dictate what your objective design standards look like, but we did, as was mentioned, already get those adopted in the inland area outside of Montecito, and have since, excuse me, worked with the BARs to refine them further, and now they would be incorporated into the Montecito and coastal zone areas as well.
Appreciate. Thank you.
One more thing. So does every county, I guess, has to adhere to these state laws, but are some of them more advanced and have already have implemented this? Are we in the tail end, the last few, or where do we stand in comparison to the rest of the state?
I would put a sort of middle towards late in the game on this. I would put us sort of middle towards late in the game on this. This is an effort, we actually started it in 2019. But for staffing reasons, the effort was kind of put aside while we, staffing was dedicated to working on the housing element. So it's only in the last six months have we kind of picked this back up to try to get it over the finish line. But I'd say we're about three years behind the curve on this.
So does that mean that some of the projects will be moved more quickly than we're used to, just because we were behind by nature of the beast here?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, as I mentioned, you know, this is all state law. So we've had projects that have met these criteria that we've had to process absent any code updates. So we've had several SB 35 projects, some supportive housing projects, not in Montecito, but elsewhere in the county. So having them codified just makes everyone's jobs easier, but the projects have already been coming. So again, that's why I say we're sort of playing catch-up here.
Right. Anybody else?
I mean, it's just a comment, you know, having sat on, having sat on different committees, not necessarily here, but, you know, in the development of trying to create objective design standards, you know, just from my own vantage point. I lament the loss of a design review process. I think that's always increased the quality of the projects that wind up being built, you know? And I've kind of read through this. And, you know, I mean, we can handcuff people in nine different ways, but in some ways, objective design review precludes the creativity that architects and their teams bring to projects. So, you know, "I need my 50 feet, I have to go in and out, there are certain things that I have to do." In order to bypass a review process, we're kind of codifying another set of rules that, you know, are they legitimate rules? You know, do I have to put a vine plant eight feet from the entrance to my building? And, you know, I mean, in some ways, I mean, I just go on the record as saying, "I think some of it's silly. It's very hard to manipulate", and making a design team start to, you know, do more than Title 24 already requires us to do. I'm not sure that the result is any better. I mean, in fact, the result may not be as good as what it would have been. I mean, before being here, you know, I spent four or five years at the Montecito Board of Architectural Review, and I know every project that came before us went out a better project. I think there would be some, you know, wonderful training for MBAR participants, before they become MBAR participants, to kind of advise them in terms of the limits of, you know, "We don't want to be subjective, you know? We don't want to be, you know, the good shouldn't be the enemy of the best." You know, there are things that we can do that help projects along and improve them. And I realize how complicated this matrix is of things that we're going to ask people to do so they can bypass, you know, what they perceive to be a lengthy project, a lengthy process, to have to go before some of these review boards. But from my vantage point, at least as a Montecedan, I know what the result of that has been, and I know it's about the quality of your community. And I just don't know that you can actually, you know, write it down in a book and say, you know, "It's this and that", and push in and go out and make sure your entrance is over here. I mean, designing a building on any given site is a complicated formula. I hope that we all bring a certain level of talent to that process, but it's not easy, and it's not necessarily by the book, and it may preclude other things that are kind of the spark of genius. So to me, I wish there were a way of making the process faster without losing the ability to have, you know, a real deep conversation. You know, we're going to get maybe a non-binding optional conceptual review of a project. You know, I question, especially when we're talking about larger mixed-use-type projects. I'm all for housing. I'm all for getting this job done. But when you're building a building of this size and this complexity and sticking it into a neighborhood, kind of hard to do it without a real robust dialogue about design, so.
Okay, thank you. You know, and I just have to repeat what I said from the beginning. After being involved in building infrastructure in the western states for 50 years, I know areas that are behind or otherwise inadequate in their infrastructure design and build-out. And we probably are in the lowest percentage of adequate infrastructure performance. And some of the projects I see will, would never get approved if we had a full SEQA. And I think we're really asking for trouble. But powers that are higher than this board and this commission will decide. But for my money, I think that we really should have addressed infrastructure before we approve projects. Anyway, comments are over. Anybody have anything else to say before we?
I do.
Okay, your light's on.
My light is on, because it's red. Red is on, okay. Regarding the, in Attachment D, page 22, the design review exemption, okay? And as has been mentioned, a maximum of one non-binding conceptual review may occur. Could we go into that a little bit? Can we work that language a little better? Somehow, the "may" and the "shall" but on this. So the requirement is, kind of, it, does it go? It will not go before MBAR unless there's a request? Is that correct by the applicant?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, and then as a courtesy, the applicant could be, it could be requested of the applicant to go before MBAR for their review, but it is non-binding, but it is not required. Is that correct? Okay. Is there any way we can put "encourage"? To go, I mean, since it's wordsmithing, but language is important. And would, is that, is "encourage" a non-ministerial, objective, subjective word that we'd get slapped on and say, "You can't put 'encourage'?"
Commissioner Sinauer through the chair. We could put "encourage", that would be okay.
What effect?
Let me just make you aware of one of the factors here, which is a project that would fall into this category, multifamily or mixed-use project. Under state housing law, the Housing Accountability Act, we can only require a project be subject to a maximum of five public hearings. After that, it's deemed approved. So when we talk about BAR, if we were to require a project to go through BAR, there go your five hearings, right? So we want to make sure that we preserve those hearings as much as possible.
Right.
And so we didn't want to have any language in here that would require, or that would sort of push them towards using up some of those hearings towards the, through the BAR process, when ultimately the BAR has no authority.
What would the five hearings kind of be?
Well, BAR, if they were to go to BAR, that would be one. If they were to go to BR again, that would be two. If they were to go to the Planning Commission, that's one. Or to Supervisors, if they were to get appealed. You know, you can see how that, those five hearings can get eaten up pretty quickly.
So the five hearings include appellate?
Correct. So we're pretty hamstrung in requiring a project to go through a hearing process in these instances. So that's why the language is not meant to kind of push someone down that road to sort of preserve our hearing opportunities.
Well, how did we come up with the magic number of five?
We did not.
The state did.
There's no way to make sure that those five hearings do not include subsequent appellate hearings.
No.
Well, I think you should just tell all the guys at MBAR to go home, because I think, you know, they're kind of wasting their time.
Well, this is, again, this is only for multifamily housing, so it would not apply to a single. But you are right. The authority and sort of the scope of review of Board of Architectural Review through state, various state laws, is as narrowed.
Again, just to make a commentary, it's amazing to me that we would take the least impactful project, a single-family residence, and create the most onerous process to go through and to look at the largest type of project that has the greatest impact on a community and greenlight it through the review process. It's, is that part of the non-common sense portion of this legislation?
No, it's the mandate to increase housing.
Commissioner Kupiec through the chair. We are actually embarking on an effort at the board's direction that is looking at sort of the whole suite of permit requirements we have for all types of projects, to look at opportunities for streamlining review and making more projects ministerial. So we'll be back over the next couple of years with similar approaches that may apply to the single family as well.
Is there a way possibly to combine the talents of the MBAR versus, you know, the commission, planning commission, and some kind of blend so we actually get some supervision over design? I mean, the idea of not having any input on design is pretty remarkable. After the 45 years I've lived in this town, I find it like, at this, this is where we've got to, where we have the least review after 45 years. It just seems like it's, I'm...
You know, Ron, to your point, there is some language in here that allows the county staff to reach out to the architectural community. I mean, I don't know whether there needs to be appropriate language. I would encourage that to happen. You know, if there's a way of filtering that commentary into your review process rather than having them go to a hearing, having them sit with you to discuss the project as it's being reviewed, I think that would be incredibly beneficial.
I think there's language to that effect.
Yes.
The director or designee may reach out to the architectural community. That's here, so.
And that was part of the language that was, that was added recently. And I'll just say that, you know, we haven't gotten many of these projects come through yet, so.
They're coming.
So far, it seems to be working, requiring projects to go through these standards, but I think it's something we're just going to have to monitor and see sort of the finished product of what do a couple of these projects look like once they've gone through and been subject to these standards. We can always come back in a few years if we decide, oh, there was, you know, some unintended consequence, and look at what happened with this or that project that we can further tweak.
Well, I can tell you, some smart college kid is going to sit down with an AI program, and he's going to plug in all of your data, and he's going to show your she, pardon me, the, both ends of the possibilities, that they will be able to create a project that is the ugliest thing that you can possibly imagine, and it will meet all your codes. On the other hand, you can also use that tool to probably do the opposite. But, you know, it's kind of...
There is some reliant on the architecture team. And, you know, we've added this language to allow staff, if they're reviewing a project, to seek professional design help, whether that's a design professional or a chair of the BAR or, you know, something along those lines.
And that does not encompass a meeting?
That would not count as a...
A meeting. It would be a what?
It would just be part of staff's review of the project.
A review, okay.
So does staff, through the offices of the Public Works, have the final say on how well the infrastructure is affected or otherwise performs in relationship to projects? I mean, how do we, I know, we're talking about architectural reviews, but I believe that the infrastructure package is going to be the biggest challenge we're going to have with all these projects. And I just, I guess we're depending on the staff to help us with that. There's no jurisdiction via planning or anybody to make that modification because the state won't permit it, I guess.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, nothing we've done in here is going to obviate the applicability of flood control requirements, project getting adequate water sanitary services, going through the public works process with regard to street frontage improvements and making sure that, you know, if there's a signal warrant, that a signal gets added. So none of those criteria and obligations of a project go away with anything we've done here.
So it doesn't supersede all the foundational, as you just spoke of, that exist? Is that correct? Okay.
But I disagree with that. It does supersede it because this is a mandate by the state, and we have to, we have to do our best to perform, and so things are dropped. We now will have water meters in Galita we haven't had in 20 years or 30 years. You know, there's, there's just a lot of things that will be modified quickly in order for this to work. I just need to make people aware that this is frothed with a lot of issues, and doesn't seem like there's much we can do about it.
Commissioner Kupiec, can you? Sorry, didn't mean to. But in your review process, you know, how many people in the planning department are architects? Let's say, none? I think that, you know, you know, I'm an architect. My job in the public realm, I mean, he's the infrastructure police, and I'm the ugly police. I make sure that nothing bad happens visibly to our community. I think having permanent review staff hired by the county to participate in these review processes so that you don't have to go before the MBAR all that frequently. You may have a way of internalizing some form of review process to make sure that that happens. I'm sure you can do it for free by reaching out to the community, but I would like to remove the "it may happen" aspect and to make sure that it will happen.
There is a vehicle called the study groups that the board supervisors can appoint for things of that nature. We can have that here, anyway.
How do you institutionalize that into the process of review? I mean, I can make sure that all the parking counts are right. I can make sure that I, you know, check all the boxes that are here. But a different kind of oversight, I think, is necessary. And if we can't provide it through a rational process, then it should be internalized into the county's process, and there should be people on your team who are kind of capable of advising a project to look at it and say, "Yeah, you know, this checks the box, and, you know, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to be shocked after it's built." Or that it maintains a certain level of visual quality. Because that's the problem for me.
Yeah, well, the community is depending on staff and commissions and boards to help facilitate what's best for the county despite what's mandated by the state. So there's a, there's somewhat of a clash there. But I don't, there's not much more we can say, Jeff. I think that...
Oh, yes, there is.
There is more? You got more? Come on.
So, no, no.
Welcome to your first rodeo.
So is there parenthetically anywhere in the language, rather, I know the five, maximum of five hearings, but is, can it be delineated anyway, i.e., for instance? Because I think it would be helpful in the language to identify that appeals are considered part of the five, which is... that appeals are considered part of the five, which is, to me, unusual. Is there any way you can work out, for instance, PC, MP, you know, MPC, all that? Is there...
Commissioner Sinauer through the chair. The Housing Accountability Act is a, a very complex set of rules and, and laws and we looked at trying to codify the housing count, all, all the requirements of that into our, our code and it just, it, it got overwhelming. So in that, in lieu of that, what we are doing is, is coming up with some resources that we can throw on our website and that can be handouts with frequently asked questions and things and guidelines for planners and applicants to be able to work with. They provide some clarity on some of those things. There's not really a, a place in the, the ordinance is in front of you today where it would really fit to have that.
So you could go on the search bar and find it?
Well, not yet, but, but...
Okay, that's fine.
Mike, please.
Mike from...
Okay. I'm in... The findings. I have a question. In 2.1, because findings are the predicate of how we recommend, basically. If we can support all the findings, we can move on. Is that not correct? Is that the constraints or the parameters of true, truly going forward on both of them? Attachment A, both cases. So 2.1, request, the request is in the interest, our recommendation, of the general community welfare. And it goes on to what we would find, what we do find if we recommend. One is that it, it is compliant with the Montecito Community Plan, is that correct? It's consistent with, maybe that's in 2.2, the CZR, okay. And where do you have that, how, how is it consistent with our community plan? All this? There's no, there's no, you know, tables. Usually if, you know, we have a project that community plan, how it's consistent, you know, with whatever element, whatever category, but it's just a general, it's consistent with the Montecito Community Plan. So the specifics of how it's compatible or...
Commissioner Sinauer through the chair. Unlike a development project, we, we, there is no, there is no physical project to evaluate consistency with. It's not like we can, with, with a development review project, you're looking at, does it comply with our noise setback or noise requirements and is grading minimized and, you know, are there impacts on biological resources? The, the ordinance updates we've crafted here, it, it really has no bearing on, on any of those.
I understand.
So there, there's no conflict, no clear conflict. If, if you could identify a conflict, we'd be happy to consider that.
Well, it's abstract at this point, though.
It's, it's all very abstract, right? So, so there is no clear conflict with the Montecito Community Plan with, with these ordinance changes.
But if, if there was, I guess is your question, right? Or what is your question?
Well, it, it's, it's a heavy lift to, for us to say it's in compliance with the, the Montecito Community Plan, okay? It's just, you know, doing, doing all this and not having a project, okay? It's, okay? It, it, it's uncomfortable. And maybe it's the common sense thing again, right? That it's common sense that it is not a project and as such, it has to be assumptive that it's in compliance and supports the Montecito Community Plan. Right? I, I'm, I'm trying to be comfortable with this and saying that it...
Can I get comfortable?
That it is, the Montecito Community Plan is in not, is in compliance with all this. And if we can just isolate that in that it is ordinance, right? Like the common sense exemption, then perhaps I can be supportive, but it's, it's a big lift for me.
To follow up on our question. So this assumes that every project has consistent good zoning and planning practices and they're not going to skirt and be on the extremes of, of the limits of, of what is considered acceptable by the state law. So not every project is, is equal to the, to the next project. So if there's like five projects and three are fairly consistent with good practices and two are not, do all five get approved? Are they of all projects considered equal if they somehow pass a subjective understanding that there's supposed to be good zoning practices? It, it just seems like there's an assumption here that it's, it's kind of hard to accept.
So Mr. Chair Commissioners, I, I think we're drifting.
You are?
A lot. No, I'm not. I think the commission may be drifting just a tad. Let, let me see if I can put us back on track. So the item before you today are ordinance amendments to the Montecito Land Use and Development Code that implement, or implements or aligns local ordinance, Montecito Development Code and coastal zone ordinance with state law. The Montecito Land Use and Development Code is the implementing mechanism for the Montecito Community Plan. So the items being presented and proposed ordinance language are not inconsistent with the community plan. It's implementing state law that is housing-related in the Montecito Land Use and Development Code. So it's not that big of a lift to say it's consistent with the, the community plan. Because we're not proposing, we're not recommending anything that's different or not in alignment with the Montecito Community Plan. We're making ordinance amendments to the, the development code, the zoning code. So that's how you'd make that finding, saying...
But there's a contradiction in what you're saying. You're, you're saying that all projects that come through this vehicle of approval will automatically satisfy the Montecito plan. And we don't know that.
Because you're amending it. Mr. Chair Commissioners, we're not, we're not saying that.
You're amending it right here. This is it.
We're, we're not speaking to any future projects. It would be speculative for us to do that.
Well, if they don't have CEQA, they're, they're, they're very speculative in by nature.
So the whole purpose of, of state law and the, is to make, make more objective standards so that whether I'm looking at it, Lila's looking at it, any three of you are looking at it, we all come to the same conclusion. And, and so state law is, more and more changes in state law are pushing jurisdictions to come up with more objective, quantifiable standards that they can apply to projects so that there's a, a certain degree of certainty associated with development applications. We're not approving any development as part of this project. What we're doing is establishing regulations that would be applicable to future development. Do you, we, the findings that you're making today are, are the code updates that we are making? Do those, are, are those code updates in, in the interest of the community welfare? Are those code updates in the interest of good planning and zoning? And our answer to that or our, our proposal for your consideration to that is, yes, they are. One is they align with state law. Two is there's significant housing needs through the community that these regulations will help address. Okay? We're not saying that every future project coming down the road is necessarily going to be planned well. What we're saying is the standards we're putting in place and the regulations and code updates that we are making, those are, are well-crafted and in the interest of the general community welfare.
Go ahead. Is it on? You're not on.
I just, there it goes. Red is on. I think what Alex is saying is true. I mean, you know, we're the Montecito Planning Commission. We're looking at a, we're looking at regulations that are going to affect our, our... So that our plan is consistent with other jurisdictions within the county, but I think from a countywide vantage point, I mean, I would certainly support this effort. You know, even though I don't like lots of parts of it, I think there is a community need and a benefit for housing and, you know, we better buckle up and get ready for this because it's critical. So I think, I mean, I would support this because I think the need is critical. Do I think it's a perfect document? No, I don't, but I think there is a great need. I mean, the, the other comment that I would just make for us, not that this is, I'm not a NIMBY, but when is the last time one of these projects, multifamily, low-income housing got proposed in Montecito? Have you ever seen one? And I doubt that you will. The land values are too high. It precludes developers from coming into this community and doing this kind of project. I mean, the difficulty that we had with Lisa, just to identify sites that were possible. You know, and they're kind of these hypothetical, you know, sure, it's possible, but, you know, unless, unless there's somebody who just has a boatload of money that they want to throw away and, you know, not, you know. I don't know many developers that are getting their wings to go to heaven, you know? I mean, so...
That's a great line.
I kind of doubt that you're going to see some, you know, wildly philanthropic gesture by the development community, community to develop affordable housing in Montecito. So to some degree, we're looking at a set of laws that are never going to, are really never going to affect us.
Well, they're going to affect a lot of other people, maybe not just Montecito.
They are, absolutely.
Well, and employee housing, you know, there are areas that...
Well, the Biltmore and Miramar are considered part of this pa, package and I don't see a lot of low-income housing there. But anyway, before we go any further, this, we're going to vote, get an approval for this. Do we need all three for this to pass or not?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we do need to have public comment. I don't know if there is anybody, but we need to ask for public comment and then we do, we need a majority vote of commissioners present today.
I see. Just two then, okay. All right. Are you, pardon me, I don't want to interrupt you. Are you finished? You sure?
I thought you were, you were going to say something, Alex.
Yeah, you weren't. I interrupted you.
Oh, Mr. Chair Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
It's fine. No, I would, you, you mentioned the Miramar and Biltmore and I just wanted to circle back that this is not a housing element and the Miramar and Biltmar are unrelated to what's before you today.
Okay.
I would say the only possible set of regulations in front of you today that could apply to those, depending on the timing, would be the multifamily or mixed-use design standards. That said, those are, that's coastal zone and those won't be in effect until the coastal commission certifies them. So the timing of, of that compared to the Biltmore and Miramar projects, don't know.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, public comments, David?
Our virtual attendees have both left, so we have no public comment.
Any AIs left? Okay. So what's left? Are you going to put it up, our, what we're going to vote on here?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Veil, you want to read this for us, just for the heck of it, or?
You can just move to adopt our recommendations.
That's good enough for you?
I so move that we adopt the recommendations.
I second.
With great reservation.
So shall we have a vote?
Well, we can do roll call if you like because Commissioner Miller never made it on. We can, you can also say all in favor, if you like.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, staff. Your, your first presentation was very nice and your...
Well-appreciated.
...was great, too, and you're always good. And thank you for interrupting me only four times this time. All right. No further ado, shall we sign off and end this meeting? Thank you. Thank you.